Good morning, everyone. Good morning. If I could have everyone's attention and some quiet. We're going to begin this morning with our invocation from Pastor Carter from the Henry County Sheriff's Office, and he will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come now to say thank you for this moment. God, we thank you for this day. Lord, we ask your choice blessings be upon this commission. God, we ask your choice blessings be upon the residents and the individuals that partner with Henry County. Now, God, as we prepare to endeavor to discuss the business matters at hand, Lord, guide our convictions, and Lord, allow us to remember the left out, the looked over, and the less fortunate. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following planned and zoning items was advertised for the September 7th, 2022 BLC meeting, but has been withdrawn by staff. An ordinance by the Henry County by Henry County to amend the Henry County Code of Ordinances regarding the regulation of parking, keeping, and storing of commercial vehicles in Henry County and for other purposes countywide. Has that been, is that being removed from the agenda? Okay, those two items are being removed from the agenda. We have an appointment, McIntosh Trail Appointment. Captain Richard Hearn, Henry County Police Department, filling an unexpired term through August 21st of 2024. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We will be adding a proclamation recognizing September of 2022 as Child Cancer Awareness Month. If I could get Nick from our Communications Department to please come up. A special note, Chris Sutherland, our EMA Specialist, and his wife Molly and his daughter Dakota will be here to accept the proclamation. So we'll take a picture once you complete, read that.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I have a proclamation for you recognizing September 2022 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Commissioners, unfortunately, we have had employees, lost loved ones due to childhood cancer. And also, like Madam Chair said, we also have Mr. Sutherland and his family here with a daughter Dakota who has successfully fought this disease since 2019. So the proclamation reads in part, "Whereas September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and we take this opportunity to honor and remember the innocent young lives taken from us too soon because of this terrible disease. And whereas according to the National Cancer Institute, childhood cancer is the number one cause of death from disease among children with the average age of diagnosis at just six years old. The organization estimates that approximately 43 children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer each day and around the world. One child every two minutes is diagnosed with cancer. And whereas the impact of a childhood cancer diagnosis produces many challenges for families, children, and caregivers, but there is great hope for the present and the future. And whereas because of better research and advanced technology, survival rates for pediatric cancer patients have improved dramatically over the past 50 years. And today innovative treatments such as proton therapy and molecular targeted therapy give doctors even more tools to fight and win the battle against childhood cancers while working to reduce side effects from treatments. And whereas throughout the month of September, all are encouraged to wear gold or a gold ribbon for childhood cancer awareness as the gold ribbon is the international symbol for all forms of cancer affecting children and adolescents. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of September 2022 is recognized as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Henry County and encourages all citizens to join the fight to eradicate pediatric cancer as well support our family, friends, and children along with the medical professionals and researchers who dedicate their lives to caring for our precious children."
Mr. Sutherland?
Next, we have presentations, Henry County Employee Retirement Recognition. We have Victoria come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Victoria Hutchison, and I am here before you today to present our August retirees. We had one for the month of August, Mr. Ronald Burt Coulter. He had 12 years of service with the Henry County Splatte Department. So we would like to thank him for his service to Henry County.
And were you going to talk about the Kaiser Walk?
So we also are kicking off our September to Remember, is what Henry County is calling this month. Our September to Remember for our employees. We kicked it off last week, September 1st, at the Kaiser Permanente Run, Walk, Roll 5K Race. We had about 65 employees participate. I'm going to put up a group picture. These were some of the participants after the race was completed. So we would like to thank everybody that came out to support. The race itself had, I think, over 10,000 participants. It was at Piedmont Park in Atlanta. So we want to thank all the employees who came out again for participating, and we look forward to a good rest of September.
And I'm still paying for it.
We had a good time.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you all.
Next, we'll have an update from the Boys and Girls Club. David Jerrigan, President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta.
Good morning. It is our pleasure to be here. I'm David Jernigan. As you said, it serves as the President and CEO for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Atlanta, and I'm joined by Jesse Coltrane, our Executive Director of the club here in Henry County. We are thrilled to have the opportunity to speak with you today. I do have a few slides. I'm assuming, yeah, we're on. So what we thought we would do is just give you a general update on who we are as a Boys and Girls Club organization, and then give you an update on what's happening locally and here in your club. Before I jump in, I just want to start with a thank you. We would not be standing before you today and would not have a club in operation in this community were it not for the support of this county commission. I will just share with you, we are in communities right now where we're having to close clubs because there's not local support in the community. But I always point to Henry County and the city of McDonough and the partnership we have with our school district. It is an example of a community that is stepping up and investing in their youth. And I'm just so grateful to have the support of this commission. So if you're not familiar with who we are, our mission is to ignite the unlimited potential of kids and teens by creating safe, inclusive, and engaging environments. And we believe that our job is really around leadership development. And so taking young people in your community and helping to build them up as leaders so that they themselves are thriving in life, but equally important, they're giving back to their communities here in Henry County. So where we serve, we are spread across 11 counties in Metro Atlanta, have the opportunity to work across all these counties. And we've been recently opening new clubs in the communities that you see on the screen there, and really excited to have one here that opened in August of 2021. So pre-pandemic, we were about 8,000 kids that we were serving across Metro Atlanta. We're getting back to those numbers. You can see that we largely serve a significant number of African-American and Latino kids, and that the average annual household income for nearly half of our families is less than $30,000. So what that means is that for most of our families, when they show up to our club, the membership fees are very low for them. So we have a sliding scale membership fee structure, which means the average family, if they have three kids, might pay $100 for a membership fee for the entire year. A very affordable out-of-school time provision, which is important to us and is really embedded within our mission. In terms of how we serve, I think what we're doing here in Henry County is a great example of the future direction of our organization. You may be familiar with clubs across the country that are kind of standalone facilities. But as we're trying to expand our impact, more and more, we are finding that partnership sites are the ideal structure for us. Schools, for example, are a great way for us to be able to be embedded within a community. But we love what's happening at our former Henry County Middle School, which is, as you all know, a community center now. And so we are embedded within that center, and our families are able to access other services beyond what's happening in the club setting. We also are able to reduce our overhead costs by being in a shared facility site, which is absolutely the future direction so we can serve kids and families more efficiently. This is our national formula for impact. And so what it says is that if we can find the kids in the highest need communities in Metro Atlanta, and we can create the outcome-driven club experience, what our national data shares with us, and this is research from the Boys and Girls Clubs of America, is that we can have outcomes in three primary areas. So you'll see our programming, and everything we do in our club is aligned to these three priority outcomes. Academic success, making sure that our kids graduate on time, that they are prepared with a plan when they leave us, and prepared if they go into the workforce, prepared to go to college, and that we've given them exposure opportunities in our club that help propel them to success in those careers or in college or beyond. Secondly, and really importantly, is that we focus on developing strong character and helping to ensure that our kids are building themselves up as leaders. And finally, what we're probably best known for is really the healthy lifestyles area. People often think of the Boys and Girls Clubs as the place that kids go to play sports, and that is an important part of what we do in our club. But it's equally important that we're equipping them to make good lifestyle decisions, that their social and emotional well-being is attended to. And so it's really a holistic approach that happens in our club every day after school. And so this unpacks those three core pillars in sort of our programmatic model. So what it looks like on a daily basis within the club, and Jesse's going to give you a little bit more content, context for how it shows up in the local club here. But what I'll say at the foundation of this is a college and career readiness focus. And this is one of the things I've grown to appreciate about the movement, is that it's so much more than just programming. It really is at the foundation, helping to equip kids to be prepared for life after, after high school. With that, I'm going to ask Jesse to come up and talk to you about what's happening here in the local club.
Thank you, David. Hello, everyone. So as David has already mentioned, that we have just recently celebrated our one-year anniversary. So in August 2021, we opened our doors, and we're located in the Henry County, a former Henry County Middle School. The launch of the club was very made possible from our local and national partners that we're very, very grateful for. All right. And with that, with some of the great local and national partners, we've been able to do great renovations to our facility by adding windows and basically recreating the space for a great program. Club opening recap is, we opened our doors, and when we opened our doors, we had 202 members initially register. That's when we first opened our doors, before we actually started programming. There was so much excitement in Henry County. And currently, right now, we serve over 370 members at our club currently right now. So we're very, very proud of that. And we have a great, strong partnership with our local schools. And we have a great youth development team, including myself as the Executive Director, Jamal Jordan as our Program Director, and Ms. Brianna Varner as our Team Director. We did celebrate our first summer, and like I said before, celebrating our opening of our club on July 20th, 2022, Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta and the Shaquille O'Neal Foundation, along with other local leaders, came up and celebrated our one-year anniversary. There was a bunch of fun and performances and showing how we actually do programming at our club. We also developed new partnerships that helped us with sports and a variety of different music programs, as well as STEAM and STEM programs as well. And we also just recently had a big, huge teen recruitment program at our club called Ignite My Fire. We had over 100 teen boys from across the Georgia area, as well as across the nation that streamed in to learn more about our club, and it highlighted financial literacy, character leadership, academic success, and healthy lifestyles. This is just some of the programs that we currently run in our club. So we, like David mentioned earlier, we have academic success programs, character and leadership, and healthy lifestyle programs running throughout our club. Our Henry County Advisory Board, we would definitely love to thank Commissioner Dee Clemens as our Chair of our Advisory Board, and the list of other board members that really helps us keep going and gives us great advisement and helps to support us. And we're always constantly looking for dedicated leaders to serve on our advisory board. I would now like to pass it back on to David to explain the rest of, and thank you for the investment of our club.
As Jesse said, we are really proud and grateful for the support of this commission. As you all know, you have signed a partnership agreement with us early on, and thanks to your leadership. And Chair Harrell came out in the early days and visited the site and had a, took the time to have a call with us to explore what this partnership could look like. Commissioner Clemens, obviously, and her leadership have been instrumental in making this club possible for kids. So your initial $300,000 investment really helped to provide for the programming and operations of the club, and you can see kind of the breakdown of how those dollars were invested. What I will say is that this is a club that requires the ongoing support of the local community. And so we are hopeful that we can continue to count on you, count on the city of McDonough that has been generous, count on the school district, local businesses that have really stepped up to help support the club. Because the annual operations of the club is about a $530,000 operation and growing to about 600 by 2023. And, you know, while we counted on the national support of partners like Papa John's and even the Woodruff Foundation here locally and the Shaquille O'Neal Foundation, those support, those dollars were really invested in the initial launch of the club, the renovations, all of the cost of getting the club open. But it's the ongoing sustainability of the club that is important to us to be able to continue to provide the services in the local community. And as I said, you all are really setting the standard across Metro Atlanta for what that looks like. These are a sample of some of our local champions, and you'll see, recognize many folks here locally who helped make this club possible. We want to thank them, and whether they're giving supplies or coming out and volunteering or writing checks to support the operations of the club, we're just grateful to have so much support here locally. And of course, we always need the support of folks in our local community. And I will just end with where we started, which is to say thank you. We're open to any questions you may have.
The board had any questions, comments?
I would just like to say to the board, because I was a club kid and worked for Boys and Girls Club. I know how important, and Chair Harrell, you started back in I don't know what year when Stockbridge was trying to do this, and then when we started was on board with us and Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Holmes. But I want to just give a shout out to Gary. Because when we first started, Sherri, you remember, it was Gary Barnes and I that went to Atlanta, that hosted the team to come down here. It was Gary that found this building, that said, "I went to this school, and this is where I want this club to be." And so just wanted to take a moment to say that this has, you know, the commissioners that weren't part of the initial launch, you were a part of the doors opening, because we couldn't have opened without the investment of the county. And the way Boys and Girls Clubs work, a lot of communities think that the Boys and Girls Club will come in and fund your community clubs. That is not how it works. If a club, if a community wants a club in their community, then the club, the community has to step up and make the investment. And what the Boys and Girls Club responsibility is, is to oversee the financial responsibility, to make sure that the staff is trained, to take on the liability, to manage the day-to-day operations. But the investment has to come from the community. And so, you know, I don't want us to ever lose sight of the process of how it works. And, you know, many of us probably won't be on this board as long as the club will be around, I hope. So I hope that whoever is here will continue to push for the investment of this county to invest. Because to invest $150,000 a year and to see the lives that are changed as a result of this club is tremendous. This year will be the first year that Henry County will participate in having a Club Kid of the Year representing Henry County to compete. And so I hope that when that comes around and that rolls around, that we're all there at the table, that the Development Authority will get on board and get some of the businesses involved. We don't have that support. We have been pushing for. All of these people that are in our communities, the warehouses, the manufacturing plants, they're not on board. They're not there. They're not investing. And we would love to see that. So our Development Authority Chair is here today, David, Jesse, so y'all run him down so that we can get some more support. But this board stepped up. This board did the initial investment. And so I just want to thank my colleagues for your support of the Boys and Girls Club.
Your county manager, Sherri Matthews, who's been so critical to our ability to get through the different layers and to be able to get permits and other things that we require. So thank you, Sherri, for your leadership and support.
Thank you, Chair, because you do all the back work stuff for us.
Thank you. Now we'll have an update on the Aquatics Center. JP, this better be good.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing this morning? Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Henry County. I am super excited today. I'm excited today. I got, I got something very exciting to show you guys today as we give an update about the Aquatics Center. I have here with me Ms. Laine Planchon, who's our Capital Projects Manager, Director. So how did we get here? Back in April of this year, we selected a site, which is Cotton Fields Golf Course property, to position the Aquatics Center. At that same time, we selected a design team, which was Architecture Unlimited. And that consisted of Jeff Shear and Tammy Ellis, who's with Aquatics H2O, and Jeff Morrison and Chris Good with Good Van Syke. And this design team, since day one, have been nothing but top-notch. We've had meetings every two weeks to get us to this point, and every meeting has been successful and productive for us to get to this point and where we are. Also, on the county side of the design team is Ms. Laine Planchon, Ron Bokholtzer, who recently retired, Rocky Romero, Hutch Purvis, and myself. And so within these meetings, we've been discussing the design, the mechanics, the, everything that could possibly go wrong. Also, on our team, we have our aquatics consultant, who has been invaluable with his knowledge of operating aquatic center, building aquatic centers, thinking of things that we may not think of based on the operation of the facility. So this is how we have got to this point. And I want to do, just jump up right now, because what you're about to see is just so exciting, and I hope you guys enjoy it as much as I do. Without further ado. So that's our Aquatics Center. I mean, it's super exciting of all the things that we have here. We have, you see all the slides that we have. We have a lazy river. We have outdoor. outdoor sporting pool or play pool. We have kids apparatus. We have the wave rider, which is huge, huge, a huge deal. Food trucks, so that we can service different tastes of people as long with, along with the concession. Inside, we have the 50-meter competitive pool. We're going to be bringing all types of tournaments and competitions here to Henry County. We have a therapeutics recreational pool inside as well. I mean, this is state of the art. And I can't, can't not, not mention the rooftop terrace. That's where we're going to have our gala to open this thing up. And that is a beautiful place for us to host events, to host other dignitaries when they come in, for us to have special events, the big jumbo board on the side to play the competitions, so people outside can see what's going on, for us to host movie nights at the Aquatics Center, at the water park, just so many things that we can do to, for Henry County and the residents of Henry County and the region, because everyone is going to be coming to this place, because this is the Disney World of the South. So where do we go from here? We plan to have the design documents completed in December. Beginning of the year in February, we're going to do the RFP for the bid for construction of the Aquatics Center and Water Park. We plan to begin construction in May of 2023, and our goal, and this is super aggressive, barring any delays with materials, weather, things like that, we plan to open Memorial Day 2024.
Right. That's impressive.
Any comments?
Any comments or, or, okay.
I just want to say, Chair Harrell, open your checkbook and be liberal. But hats off to your team and the work that you've done. This is absolutely amazing. We asked you to make sure Henry County was second to none, and you made Henry County second to none with this presentation. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to know what's the price tag, because I know we don't have enough. So I say that to say that we need to be on top of that right away. I know that we did some bonding meetings and some stuff about funding before. So Sherri, if you guys, I know you're ahead of the game already.
Yes.
But I want us to be transparent and open that we don't have enough money to do all of this. But whatever we need to do, we got to make sure that we get this facility done. So.
Yes.
Do we have a plan for that?
We do. We've, we've been discussing that. Lynn can speak to that a little bit more if you, if you would like. Since it is a SPOLOX project.
It is a SPOLOX project, and we've got a couple options. David is looking at, the SPOLOX program has been tracking collections ahead of schedule, even though we're not done. We may look at that. We can look at impact fees. We can look at ARPA. I mean, we, there's, there's a few options to make up. The architect was very conscientious in designing to the budget, but then there were some things that we, we wanted and thought that we needed. If we're going to do it, we need to do it now.
Yeah.
So that's what's going to impact the budget a bit. And until the, you know, the construction RFP goes out, we'll have to, we won't really truly know what, what the cost is going to be.
If we could add alongside that staff for the facility as well, I know we're going to have to staff the facility. So if we could look at the entire project together, so just so that there's a full number out there, there's a hard number. I know we can't stick to that number, but just an idea of what it's going to cost for operation as well.
Yes.
And the goal is to generate enough revenue to, to, you know, properly staff.
I know SPOLOX funds won't be able to carry that.
Right. That would come out of operating.
Right.
And we're working with the aquatics consultant to get all of that together.
Okay. Yeah. So we just need to get that, so that we can just be ready for it and prepared for it. But congratulations. Thank you. I think it's amazing. Of course, it's got Lynn's stamp on it.
All right. Any other comments?
When you're doing your proposal, please, for the next time, tell us how you're going to upgrade Cotton Field around the golf course, what upgrades would come there and what costs would be there. Because I know you're doing a full-fledged plan, not just for the Aquatics Center, but for the surrounding area as well. So would you make that the next time a part of your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. We are discussing how we're reworking the Cotton Fields, because there are three holes that are affected, that we will rework into the remaining area of the golf course.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Exciting. Next, we'll have the Henry County Development Authority update. If Josh Finn, Executive Director, will come forward.
Good morning, ma'am. Chair of Commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. I'm going to try my best to follow that. Let's see. There we go. Commissioners, again, Josh Finn, Executive Director, Henry County Development Authority. I'm joined today with our Board Chairman, Mr. Irv Culpepper. I'm here to give our annual report. This annual report structured in the fiscal year, which we follow the county's fiscal year format as well. I've got a lot of data to update the board on, and I'm going to try to run through it and answer questions afterwards, if we could hold to that, please. Because I know y'all got a lot on agenda today. Once I get this clicker worked out. So just a quick reminder for the audience today, our Board Directors is appointed by this board, six-member board, and our staff, as you see on the right. Mission and vision, I won't go through that too much, really just kind of break it down. The goal of the Development Authority is the Economic Development Organization countywide, is to grow jobs and investment in Henry County by recruiting, retaining, and growing businesses in the community. Key industry sectors, advanced manufacturing, supply chain logistics, and professional solutions. You see some of the companies there. Why industrial and commercial development so important, especially to the tax base? On average, the research continues to tell us that on a commercial, and that can be a retail property, that's not an industrial use for manufacturing or logistics, and then industrial, which would be the manufacturing logistics, requires about 60 cents per every dollar of property taxes collected in that versus residential, which is $1.40. Going into this recent digest that just posted, according to the Tax Assessor's Office, that makeup is 33.5% of Henry County's tax base now, with residential making just shy of 64%. Some other data as well, too, and I know I'm running through this pretty quickly, but the clerks got everything. They'll be posted with all the meeting information after the meeting. Industrial building valued at $50 million pays in taxes, what, about 350 houses at 250K per house, equal the same amount of taxes. And obviously, with the changes in the housing market, that metric shifted a little bit, but the formulas are still the same and the impact's still the same. That's out there. Going through our tax digest, I know there are some mentions on that, but getting this from the assessor's office, as you can see, the breakdown that's there. But one of the other things I did want to provide, the commission, this is some of the stuff that I provided to my board recently, taking a look at things. It's 2019 versus 22 comparison over the past three years. And obviously, we've had a lot going on with the pandemic, economic crisis, recovery, a lot of different terms that are out there. But as you can see, we have had a reduction in our profit centers in the industrial and commercial sectors, and the makeup of the digest is we continue to grow population. The good news is, and this is just on industrial, I did not break down the commercial, and I can make that available if the commission would like. The industrial values have gone up to help offset those metrics in y'all's budgeting this year. So I know that, that was helpful as y'all were going through some budget decisions, having more revenues available without having to increase the milledage, which I know is important, not just for the county, but the school board and the municipalities as well, too. I think every tax and jurisdiction minus one kept mills rates at the same amount, which is a good sign overall. And again, another breakdown of the value growth of the digest as well. Also, I wanted to throw some information on how Henry County's trending for the commission and the public, and some data that we're seeing. And my graphics are not coming up the way I want to on here, so I apologize. I want to walk through that a little bit. Our systems are not talking to each other. But our projected population growth for the next five years is a little below 1%. So we've had higher growth projections than percentage-wise, but as we continue to grow, the base is more. So the percentage is coming down, but we're still trending on the growth pattern. We are ahead of the Atlanta MSA still and the state and national average. Our median age is compressed in there. We're getting younger, which is good. I say that as a Gen Xer, but it is a good thing. Overall, this is what businesses look for. A lot of businesses that we look to recruit, not just in the industrial areas, but also in the retail areas. Younger folks do spend more money, disposable income. So that's something that they look at, and these are key metrics. So we are younger than Metro Atlanta, way younger than the state of Georgia, and way younger than the national average in the U.S. One of the other things we got going in Henry County, again, my apologies on the graphics, but Henry County's graduation rate is way higher than some of our neighboring counties, which is a good thing, high school attainment. So our school system and private schools are doing a great job there. One of our opportunities for growth, though, is education attainment post-high school. That is something that we are behind the MSA, the state, and national average. That is associate degree, technical degrees from Southern Crescent Tech schools and above, moving up to the university systems that are out there. And that's one thing, we're looking to help our post-secondary schools market their programs that are out there, whether they want a professional degree from one of our colleges, especially ones with campuses here, like Mercer, Clayton State, and Gordon State, or Southern Crescent Technical College in the Henry County campus here. Some other trends we're seeing that a lot of businesses look at, we get asked about a lot, some of the metrics, we're doing well, millennials, retiring soon. We don't have a lot of folks retiring soon, but we also have a very good diversity mix in the county. Got a great veterans community that's here, some metrics to look at. And kudos to our public safety units, as you can see, the crime statistics as well, too. These are metrics that are looked at and we get asked for on a continuous basis. Next up, this slide is some research that was done by Georgia Powers Community Economic Development Team, showing job growth trends if we do nothing over the next five years. And as you can see right now, if we do nothing, and not get involved in trying to recruit other businesses in here, accommodation and food services leads the way at 25% of the job growth. But that's actually also the lowest average earnings per job. Our efforts in manufacturing, which I'll get into here in just a minute, as you can see, scored the second highest behind government and healthcare, and healthcare right behind it positions. And those are two areas that we're focused on trying to recruit and trying to assist where we can and recruit those styles of companies in here, because those are a higher average earning wages. So we expect that to change. Now, something interesting, this is just by position in the job codes and growth of residents of Henry County. Film industry is really, we're getting a lot of folks moving in here or taking positions in the film industry. So we see some opportunities there. We're working aggressively towards that to try to assist where we can in the film industry, but also to try to get some of those businesses that are more tied to the day-to-day operations of that. But that is a very good growth trend that we're seeing in the SOC codes, and the SOC or NEX codes are the job position descriptions a lot of employers use to describe the position. All right. So FY year-end, I've done a snapshot for our board. I wanted to share this with this board on retail office and industrial properties, and where the vacancies, price points, et cetera, are. Retail vacancy is down countywide, down to 1.7% overall. This is data coming from CoStar at fiscal year-end, which was July 1. So that's a great sign for us that retailers are moving in, not just your big national chains, but your small businesses as well, too, taking up those spaces. But that's also an encouragement and sign to retail developers looking to bring new product into the metro market in here. They're taking a look at Henry County. Rent rates are up, sales prices as well, too. The value of the Henry County retail property is going up. So those are encouraging signs there. Office vacancy rate, we're up, but we're not alone, as changes in jobs, reporting to work in the office continues to change. We're not immune to that metric in there. But as you can see, rent rates are going up, sales prices are going up. Now, one interesting stat, and it is a little bit of anomaly, but we're going to take it. Office construction is up 435.3% versus July 1 of last year. Big reason of that is that Jodico Med One Project, which I know we all partnered on to help get the Jodico Interchange going. We think that's going to be a significant impact, not only to the medical community, but also help with the Bridges of Jodico development across the way with 200-plus workers right across the highway, that's daytime lunch traffic for the retail over there, and really start getting that interchange going that's been sitting idle for a long time. But it's also a statement of how behind we are on office development that's out there. But as office developers are looking, and their capital money's looking, they look at that metric, and we kind of stick out right now. We're going to take that win in there on that number. So that number will come down, but it's a good number for now. And then last but not least, industrial vacancy rates down to 4.2%, and that trend is continuing to go lower in there. We don't have a lot of vacant building space left in the county for new companies to come in. But the rent rate has gone up, and the sales price has really gone up in property on that end. So that's a good sign for the digest. And as mentioned earlier, those properties are the profit centers of the tax digest for the tax and jurisdictions. Some other year-end stats, and I'll go on some fun stuff as well, too. Population continues to grow. We're just shy of 250. Medium household income, right there at 14th. I know Harold and his team pulled that number recently, and we were glad to see that. So thank you, Harold. But that's continued, we're up 10.1% from 2001. So we're trending in the right direction there. Population-wise, you can see on the map there where we stack with some of our neighbors. One thing I'm really glad to see is that median income, that's kind of short there, 79,030. But we're right there in the same ballpark with Gwinnett County now. So we're working up with some of the stronger economic counties in the metro and the ARC counties. So we're moving up, and we're definitely the strongest on the south side economically. So I'm really glad that we're at that metric now. Some other fun stats for this up here, as, you know, we've had some other things going on with AMS, Atlanta Motor Speedway, and their recent upgrades over their capital investment. Some of the sales tax numbers are coming in. Nice 30% bump versus 2019, the last time they had a full non-COVID restricted event NASCAR race at the facility. And then 11% versus March of '21, when they had a partial opening for the event. We're waiting for the July numbers to come. We work closely with David Smith and his team to get that information. But sales taxes overall are going up, which is good. That grows the pot and puts more resources for aquatic centers and other resources that are out there in case there's budget overruns, as sales tax collections continue to go, fund roads, traffic lights, et cetera, that we need if we can continue to grow that pot. But AMS is also important in our efforts as well, too, as we're seeing more in new trends in automotive with electric vehicles and autonomous vehicles. It's becoming more and more of a short-term testing facility for companies that are being leased out. So we're trying to target those companies to locate either their facilities or their research here, so they can take advantage of the asset that is AMS here in the county already existing. And we work closely with the AMS team on those types of projects and companies. But again, it's not just the Speedway that's drawing it, with the amphitheater, retail growth, getting Marketplace by Macy's, Dave and Buster's into the county, some of those. Tanger continues to be a stronghold for our economy in the county, tourist destinations like Southern Bell, our trail system, and other great venues that we do have. Pinola Park draws people to Henry County, et cetera. We've got some great opportunities, but as we continue to grow all those, that keeps continuing to rise the sales tax growth in the county overall. And one other thing, a really, just recent stat that just came out, we like to look at, that we're not heavily involved in, the small business development and other agencies take the lead on that. Inc. 5000 just came out with their top 5,000 for the year. 5,000 for the year. Henry County had three, uh, this year. Uh, so, as our economy continues to grow, we continue to grow the environment, uh, for small businesses to thrive, uh, as more capital, uh, is coming into the community. Uh, so, congratulations to those companies. That's not an easy achievement to make the INC 5000, uh, small business owners will tell you. Uh, but where that ranks us, uh, we're six in the state. Uh, we're fifth in Metro Atlanta or the 11 ARC counties, uh, out there. As you can see, kinda breakdown out there, and we're actually outpacing some of our, uh, economic strong- economically stronger neighbors in Fayette and Cherokee, um, and Douglas, that we like to kinda benchmark, uh, at the Development Authority to see how we're doing economically. Uh, those are three of the, uh, core ones we try to look to, uh, to see how we benchmark. So, uh, we got some good things going in that sector as well. So, our Establishing Industry Program, just wanna mention that, uh, real briefly, uh, provide support and help retain Henry County's, uh, Establishing Industries, those that are vested in here. Uh, we partner with various institutions, support these efforts, workforce development, job training, it could be, uh, addition, some of the things we work with the county staff, traffic planning, um, and traffic infrastructure, uh, as we just had some recent projects that are coming online that have been critical, uh, for the employees to get in and out, um, in that, uh, sector. And then, uh, lastly, uh, we just launched yesterday our new Made in Henry campaign, uh, to help educate our citizens, uh, career opportunities that are behind the walls. If we have companies, uh, who manufacture, but they drive by a building, they may think they do distribution, or it's just dead storage, uh, that's going on. Uh, we have commissioned, um, a series of productions and working with our companies who are willing to let us come inside the doors to take a look at what goes on inside, but also what are the opportunities? It's not just material handling or working on the assembly line. Uh, there's research and development positions, there's marketing positions, there's accounting positions, there's HR positions, there's management positions, uh, a variety of different style positions that are out there. Now, it may not be the office tower, white-collar jobs, uh, some of our other counties have right now, uh, but there are opportunities, they're smaller in numbers, uh, but there are opportunities there. Um, so, if you are interested, I encourage everyone to take a look at our Facebook or LinkedIn page, uh, where we have posted that, uh, and we'll get that to County Communications as well, too, if they'd like to share. Uh, but our first one featured our largest private employer, LaZotica, uh, that's out there. So, um, it's about a two-and-a-half-minute video, and I hope y'all get a chance to take a look at it, uh, before the week's over. And if you like it, share it. My quick plug. Uh, major employers, um, these are, uh, where we're at right now, as you can see, um, yeah, a lot of the, uh, major employers in the county, uh, in the top 10, and this is what their, uh, committed headcount is. Some of those are still building up to them right now, um, and going on, uh, the Development Authority's been involved in bringing them in. But as you can see, we're not so, uh, heavy as an employment government-dependent, even though we got some strong government employee, um, operations in the county. But we have a good mix. Our international community continues to grow, as you've seen with some of our previous, uh, announcements here recently, uh, out there. Uh, so, uh, we got a very good international mix. So, the world is seeing Henry County as a great place to invest, uh, in there. Just a quick snapshot of those companies and their, uh, where they're from. Fortune 500 facilities, yeah, we don't have the headquarters, but, uh, we do have them invested here. Uh, and if you can get them invested here, you can grow them here and grow and get different business operations as well, too, uh, as we've seen with some of our companies, uh, listed here. And then overall, our deal sheet, uh, we could probably produce about six or seven of these slides, but we got a great, a lot of companies you know and, uh, see every day, uh, where you work, uh, and just great opportunities there, uh, to, uh, buy Henry-made products and services, uh, supporting Henry County jobs, uh, as we shop every day. Uh, some recent awards Development Authorities won since, uh, I've last been here, and it's been a little while. Uh, we're very, uh, excited. We got the Manufacturing to Deal, uh, Gear Award, uh, with the Xenus, uh, redevelopment of the Toys R Us Distribution Center to their new manufacturing facility, uh, from the Atlanta Business Chronicle, gave us a lot of great, high-profile, um, exposure in the market. So, for FY '22, uh, we assisted 14 companies, um, coming in or expanding in Henry County, uh, equating about 2,200 or 2,300 new jobs and, uh, $208 million in, uh, new investment into the digest. Uh, that is fiscal year, uh, July 1 to July 1. Now, this is our calendar year, uh, total, uh, as, uh, we're moving forward, as you can see over the last, uh, few years, uh, just shy of 8,500 new jobs in the Henry County. And part of the reason we put Piedmont Henry in there, these are, uh, positions that are, give insurance as a benefit. Uh, one of the stats, um, we constantly get asked for by Dr. Henson and her leadership team at Piedmont Henry is the new jobs, uh, coming in because as they're making business cases to get capital improvement dollars from Piedmont Corporate, um, showing that we're growing the market share here in Henry County, uh, with insured employees in the market, uh, is critical. But that's also been a benefit as well, too, for smaller medical groups moving into the county, uh, seeing the growth in our market share as well, too, in smaller medical practices, pharmacies, uh, urgent cares, et cetera. So, we are growing the market share here. In investment overall, since 2017, uh, the Development Authority's brought in 1.19 billion, uh, into the county, um, in the county tax digest. So, uh, we measure mainly on calendar year, uh, and just, uh, update the board, uh, just over the last three years, uh, over the last two years, uh, our three major benchmarks that we looked at, we have set all-time records, uh, in the three main categories over our six decades, uh, of existence here in Henry County. And, uh, we're looking to continue that trend, hopefully, this year. Some other things that we're working on, uh, we are in the process of doing a retail market study, uh, potential attraction plan in partnership with Henry County, uh, and our municipalities. Uh, part of that study is looking at, uh, what Henry County's good at attracting, uh, but also what our, some of our weaknesses are, where some of our improvement areas could be, et cetera, in that regard. Uh, that project has just, uh, got going, and, uh, we're moving forward on that one. Uh, we're looking to review and update our Target Industry Study, uh, here. That's something that we had to put on pause, uh, with, uh, COVID. Uh, we're looking to get that back up and going here shortly. Uh, we're looking to get back into in-person job fairs as our partners, uh, mainly at Department of Labor, et cetera, are looking to do that. The last one we had right before COVID, Commissioner Clemens, you're heavily involved in that, over at Dushtown, uh, was a very big success, uh, and those photos actually help us attract other companies with line out the door, uh, of folks ready to get in, uh, take advantage of some of the opportunities there. And I know the county as well, too, Harold and his team, I'm picking on you a lot, Harold. You wore Miami jersey on the video this week. So, um, but, um, yeah, something that we all get to take advantage of. But if we can also help folks who move into the area, who take a job in Atlanta, but find something on Zillow or Real Estate that, hey, Henry County's a great place to live, but they don't know about the jobs and opportunities that are here in Henry County. We can get them short that commute, uh, take a look at that opportunity, similar job, similar pay, uh, more time at home, more time to make first pitch at the Little League game or kickoff, uh, or, uh, go read at the class. Uh, those are good opportunities we wanna promote. Uh, we're looking to expand our workforce development partnerships as well, too, because that is an area of need. Um, there's no easy solution to that question, uh, but we are working diligently with our partners, uh, and some of our new staff and some of their connections as well, too, have been helpful in, uh, speeding up that process. So, I went through a lot. So, uh, I hope you learned something new and, uh, happy to take a question or two.
Thank you.
If not, I'm good.
I just wanna thank you for this presentation. It was very interesting, and it excites me to see someone try to cap- capture what Henry County government is doing, what the, um, Economic Development Authority is doing. Often, the question is, what do you guys do? What this says, what you do. I certainly hope that someone will work with you, uh, Sheri from our Communications Department, to try and find some highlights to put together to publish, since we can't seem to find, and I'll be good, Sheri, the other agency to highlight us. We need to highlight some of this good stuff that he's sharing about the county and be very proud of it, because this comes with a lot of work, uh, to make these industries, um, happy to stay here, to attract them here, to find that sweet spot, to say, this is the place to be. This is great information, and information I would like to be able to echo on behalf of the county. So, I'm looking forward to this presentation, uh, going in another format that we can share, each of us maybe on our personal pages and our commissioner pages about what's happening in Henry County. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll be happy to bring in, I'm not the design expert, as you can tell, but, uh, happy to bring in some help to help us with that.
Thank you.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Sheri.
Consent agenda, if we'd have our county manager, Sheri Mathis, to please come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Wednesday, September 7, 2022, 9:00 a.m. And we have a resolution authorizing the purchase, delivery, and setup of six HealthBot blood pressure kiosks for use at six county facilities in the amount of $43,092 utilizing ARPA funds. Under Leisure Services, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners accepting the allocation for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Building Opportunities in-Out-of-School-Time Boost Grants Program awarded to Henry County Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $25,000. We also have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of four HealthBot blood pressure kiosks for use at four senior centers totaling $28,278. Expenses are reimbursable via the Community Services Block Grant Program, CSBG Careers Fund, for federal fiscal year 2022. We have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to rescind Resolution Number 22-182 and approve a SourceWell contract for the lease of 10 mowers to operate and maintain parks in the amount of $118,318.20 by monthly lease of $3,0128.30 for 36 months using funds from park areas, 6220 rental of equipment. Under Public Works, we have a resolution declaring items and equipment listed on Exhibit A as surplus and authorizing disposal of said items. Under SPOS, we have a resolution approving adoption of the GDOT procurement policy for the procurement, management, and administration of engineering and design-related consultant services. We also have a resolution approving the purchase of CERN real property located at 3,000 Highway 42 North, Henry County, Georgia, in the amount of $2.1 million for use as the District 4 Police Precinct, SP5014, parcel number 069-01008011. And then, our final resolution is a resolution approving this, the disbursement of $100,000 of local grant-match SPOS 5 funds to the Henry County Library Board of Trustees for the state-grant-funded renovation project at the McDonough Public Library, SPOS Project Number SP5303. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Okay, so I'd like to call for a motion.
Second.
Got a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's gonna be, I'm gonna do a couple of changes to the agenda. If we could have our transportation and planning, uh, to come up, uh, are we doing the transportation and planning? Sam Baker, are we doing that today?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, Sam.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm here this morning to seek your permission to conduct an I-75 commercial vehicle lanes traffic impact study. I'm sure you all are aware that the Georgia Department of Transportation is proceeding to construct two barrier-separated commercial vehicle lanes or truck-only lanes from Macon to McDonough. These two truck-only lanes will come to an end at a very, very busy location in central Henry County at State Route 155. Um, north of State Route 155 on I-75, the trucks will be forced to merge into the general-purpose lanes. Concerns have been raised by Henry County citizens, our citizen representatives of the Transportation Advisory Group, Henry County staff, as well as our elected officials. What will be the effect of such traffic, uh, truck merger on I-75 North, north of Exit 216, uh, on I-75? So, what we plan to do, uh, backing up, Georgia DOT held a public information open house a year ago, and we did express our concern to GDOT and its consultants. According to GDOT and its consultants, traffic flow will be better on I-75 North, north of Exit 216 after the completion of the, uh, commercial vehicle lanes. The purpose of this study in light of citizen concern is to check and confirm the claims of Georgia DOT and its consultants. So, what we will do is we're gonna take the intersection of I-75 and State Route 155, Exit 216, we're gonna draw a one-mile circle around it, and we're gonna study this area very closely, the land use and transportation, and see if there's anything that we should do or, um, consider doing in light of the commercial vehicle lanes coming up to State Route 155. For example, does the interchange, uh, of I-75 and 155 need to be upgraded? If it does, what should be the configuration of the upgraded interchange? Should the traffic, uh, movement be any different? Do we need to look into any roads in that area? We will also conduct three scenarios, uh, of computer simulation of traffic on I-75. First one is, how will be the traffic flow without the commercial vehicle lanes constructed? Number two, what will be the traffic flow be like with the commercial vehicle lanes as being planned? And the third scenario, what will be the traffic flow like on I-75 from State Route 155 up to I-65, I-675, if those commercial vehicle lanes were extended farther north up to I-675? So, with, with the results of this study, I believe we will have some data, some, um, uh, outcome that will give us some leverage to have a dialogue with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Atlanta Regional Commission for, uh, maybe potentially a new project extending the commercial vehicle lanes farther north up to I-675, or maybe converting the existing managed lanes into truck-only lanes, or some other dialogue, instead of just relying only on GDOT's data and its claim. So, with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Sam. Um, this is much needed. I think that, you know, um, I'm very concerned about where the lanes end. I'm concerned about the traffic that we already have and the traffic that we are going to be expecting to have, uh, as, uh, that truck traffic continues to increase out of the Port of Savannah. Um, I think that this is a much-needed study, so we will be able to have data to, uh, make our case, uh, to, to GDOT as well as the Atlanta Regional Commission. Um, so, yeah, there any other comments or Commissioner Clemens?
Concur with what Chair Harrell has said, but also that we have an absent, um, um, state representatives that should be participating as well, because we're gonna need some voices to help us once we get our study, once we know the impact. How do we make sure that we, um, try to move whatever the feasibility study says needs to happen forward? Where does the funds come from? Because what happens is, and I want the citizens to know, that once that traffic dumps off on our interchanges, the only place to go is in our, our neighborhoods. There is nowhere else for those trucks to go but into our neighborhoods, and so it's gonna impact our citizens and their quality of life in a very negative way. Um, one of the things that I know that I had mentioned when they started with this process is why not take it on up to, um, um, 675 where there's more industrial, less industrial traffic? Industrial, but less industrial traffic. Well, we have industrial, but we have an impact of industrial traffic that's, um, you know, ob- enormous. So, um, yes, I think we need the impact, but we also need to have other people at the table so that once we get our, um, impact study, that we can have some more fire to help fight the issue.
This could be one of the things that we can discuss at our legislative, uh, luncheon that's coming up soon, on the 29th, with our legislators, um, to let them know as well. And, and- that's coming up soon, on the 29th, with our legislators, to let them know as well. And Commissioner Clemens, you are absolutely right. To take it to 675, to me, would make more sense, because those trucks have to travel 285 anyway, and so it would take them into that traffic. But to dump it right here at 155, it's a nightmare already.
One more thing, Chair Harrell. Sherri and Nancy, I know that the state highways belong to the state, and it's not much that we can do from a state highway perspective, but I'm always concerned about what policies we can put in on a local level to prohibit the impact from going into the roads that we do have control of. So I would like for us to have maybe a sit-down with our team to talk about some different policies and procedures that we can put in place to how can we, from a GPS system, Sam, from, you know, policies and procedures or fees, that we can combat, how does this going to impact our local roads? So I think that there are some things that we have to be creative about that we may be able to do to deter it from dumping here, because if we let it dump here and it can only be on state roads, then they may reconsider where it really needs to go.
So would this study include how it would impact our neighborhoods if it is dumped, if it stops at the one, at exit, at the Highway 155? Does it, will this study give us some, I guess, feedback as to how it would, how it would actually affect those communities? Because once you go down 155 either way, you have neighborhoods, and so how would it impact those neighborhoods if that, if the truck-only lane is stopped at 155?
So I showed you this graphic. We're going to study that one-mile circle area, look at all the impacts in that area, and if there's anything we should do as a result. And we will also look at all the impact on I-75 and look at the different, three different scenarios, what the traffic flow is in each different scenario.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have a question, and I do agree with you on your statements. This is very important, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Clemens, you made some great points. I wanted to know in your study, is it possible to add in there the possibility, if land is available, of some form of access roads for local traffic only, non-trucks? Can you add that as a part of the study to see if that's a possibility, and if we can secure some type of support from the state because of this impact, that they will help us with something of that nature?
We can certainly have that conversation with our consultant, should we choose to proceed with the study.
Thank you.
So this would impact access, because they're doing the access roads from one, from, no, from, talking about the Western Parallel, they're doing those access roads up to Jonesboro.
Stops there.
It stops there, but it's just on the western side.
Right.
This would be further conversation about not only just western, but the eastern side, having the, you know, access roads along both sides of the interstate.
Local traffic, yes.
But, you know, I don't know, as part of this particular study, you're saying a one-mile radius, so along that one-mile radius, that should be able to include if it's feasible to have the access roads along I-75.
I think one-mile radius is not enough, because off of those exits within a one-mile is industrial, and that doesn't, I think we need to go out a little further if we're going to really look at the impact of the citizens.
Does that want to impact the cost, if we go further than a mile?
In fact, the consultant suggested that we look at a two-mile area.
Okay, so two-mile, okay. All right. Commissioner, I
So we just had Josh up here, and I think this presents a wonderful opportunity. Also, we talked about traffic, but growth for the county from an industrial standpoint with these lanes coming, and the idea of expanding that up to 675 might help better disperse that tractor-trailer traffic. The reason I mention this is what available land for industrial growth is there if we spread that out over a further distance? And will we be working with the development authority on that? Because I think that's a huge opportunity for growth with industrial.
Well. Well, you have given something to think about, and yes, there are a lot of issues that we need to consider. So that is one area that we'll focus on, but definitely we can involve the development authority in the study.
The only reason I mention that is we need to be careful in the point that if they put those lanes in, the growth is coming. We just need to be prepared for it and have the lanes in place and have those pockets of industrial, we know and can identify them. Because, trust me, they put those lanes in, the first opportunity they're going to look is going to come find warehouses and put there, which is exactly what they should do. The lanes are available.
Commissioner, if I could jump in?
Thank you. You bring up an excellent point, and I think that's where the board will come in, in making sure that the future land use map is followed. I think we have specific designated areas along our flume that specifies industrial property, and most of that industrial is around that 155, State Route 42 corridor because of the accessibility to I-75. So I think we may need to maybe bring back to the board just the current flume to make sure that, hey, we agree that this is where we want to see industrial, so that we can make sure that we maintain it within a specific area, because you're absolutely right. Once we enhance it, once we add those additional lanes, once we study the area and recommendations come back, there will be a big desire to make sure that we're able to expand it. I think Josh would love to be at the table and be a part of that conversation. I know he's reached out to David and I specifically in terms of what can the county do with the development authority in identifying some industrial areas that he can market specifically for industrial development. So now is the perfect time to have that conversation, and we'll certainly follow up with the development authority, make sure planning and zoning is included, but also make sure the city of McDonough and our bordering cities are a part of the conversation as well, because they have tracts and land that they will develop for industrial, that we may not be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely. Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
What does the new interchange play into the scenario?
How does what change?
The new interchange?
It does not. The GDOT is proceeding with the Bethlehem interchange as currently scheduled, and the construction is scheduled to start sometime in 2025, '26, and end in three, four years. So that is proceeding as planned.
So will it be designed for the new lanes to exit off the new interchange as well?
They're taking the commercial vehicle lanes into consideration in the design and construction, yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
So a couple, a couple of months back, I guess it was, what, six, eight weeks ago, Sherri, we had a lunching with GDOT, and we expressed our concerns, and I was, I think I was the only commissioner there, but either way, we expressed our concerns about the express lanes, turning them, the express lanes into the truck lanes to get them to 675. And they was open to that, to look into, to do a study. So I'd like to see what GDOT's doing for us before we overlap what they're doing. And then what study I'm seeing is going to involve a couple of cities. So where are the cities at? Are they going to be part of the study? Are they going, what, we doing the study for Henry, or are we doing it for all, all the municipalities as well? Because it looks like a lot of that's in the city limits.
To answer your question, the consultant is prepared to give presentations before the board, and we can ask them to engage the cities of Locust Grove and McDonough.
But it is 100% funded by the county. This study will be funded 100% by the county, even if it includes roadways that may be within the municipal boundaries.
So there's already, there's already studies for 155. I think there's plans for widening 155 from, from Keys Ferry Street all the way over to, down to, on the, on the south side of where Hampton Locust Grove Road. They're two separate projects. They're talking about replacing bridges. So GDOT has a lot of this already. I'd like to see what they have before we start studying what they've already completed, so we could probably show some savings and probably get the cities involved as well, because it looks like the majority of that's in the city limits.
So Commissioner Wilson, one of the challenges we have right now is the commercial vehicle lane project that GDOT is doing. They are already in the design phase, and so that's why Mr. Baker wants us to be able to present quantifiable data to GDOT to say, "Look, we don't want you stopping the CVLs at 155. We have a lot of truck traffic that bottlenecks at Eagles Landing Parkway trying to get to 675, and so we have to, if we don't do this, they're not going to amend their plans to look beyond that 155 corridor." And so that's one of the reasons we're wanting to do this, because even in that conversation with them, we've had multiple conversations about where this project terminates. And I think what we've heard from GDOT is, if that's y'all's argument, then you all need to prove it to us that there are some issues.
Well, they seem to be pretty open about putting the express lanes. So anyway, I just think we're overlapping beyond, and the cities need to be involved as well.
There has to be a reason why they wanted to end those lanes in McDonough, number one. Number two, why isn't there truck lanes heading south as well?
My understanding is that GDOT is building truck-only lanes only on 75 North because of the growth of Port of Savannah and all the additional trucks that bring cargo to Metro Atlanta. GDOT is less concerned about the traffic flow the other way.
Cargo going to the port as well?
Apparently, GDOT is not concerned enough to build truck-only lanes on the south side, on I-75 South. So that's what GDOT has explained, is improve traffic flow by separating the trucks only on I-75 North because of additional cargo coming from Port of Savannah to Atlanta. And why does it end at 155? We haven't gotten a good answer.
So this is a plan to expand the local roads for all those trucks that are coming from the port into McDonough? All those trucks will flood, you know, the, our local roads? So this plan is to develop roads to, to reduce the traffic flow of all the semi-trucks coming in Henry County?
We want to assess and look at where do all these trucks go when the current truck-only lanes end at State Route 155?
They're going to all the warehouses.
And do we need to do anything as a result?
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'd like to call for a motion to allow Mr. Baker to move forward with this impact study.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Those opposed? You got that, Stephanie? Okay. Motion carries. Yes.
I just want to thank Sam, because, you know, we've got to be proactive instead of reactive, and this is what this does. Sherri, thank you for saying, you know, it's coming. We got to get ahead of the game, and so this is why. And the fact that the cities are going to be impacted, and this covers the cities, every citizen is a county citizen. So we have to make sure that we look out for everybody and not wait on anything. So thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to have a resolution to transmit the state require capital improvement, EIE, CIE, Community Work Program. Who's doing that? Tucson?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners.
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so essentially, the CIE annual update in the Community Work Program allows us to continue to collect impact fees. And so also, it helps with our qualified local government status as well. So this is a must that we do each year. Really not much else to talk about on this one. This is just the fiscal year end of the budget, or fees that were collected through impact fees, and this just hits on the Community Work Program.
And that's it.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak will have a total of three minutes. Does anyone like to come forward and speak with regards to the capital improvement element, annual update? Anyone from the public wishing to come up and speak? Okay, if the board don't have any additional questions, I'd like, okay.
Can you go back? Because you went so fast, I couldn't even see all of it. This is for, I don't see Parks and Rec on here, and you didn't break it down. So you guys didn't ask for Commissioner's input on how the impact fees were spent in the districts? Is this impact fees and where they're going to be spending each district?
No, this is just the annual update we provide to
Oh, which you've already done?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is an ordinance by the Henry County to amend the Unified Land Use Development Code, ULDC.
Yes, ma'am. So this deals with DRIs and traffic impact studies.
So this is a public hearing as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So this deals with the traffic impact studies and DRIs. So we're talking about traffic, as you were a few minutes ago, and what this ordinance will give us the ability to do, as of right now, we deal with traffic impact studies of the zoning condition for most of the developments, right? And so every now and then, you get a development that is a DRI, that's over 400 units, or maybe 500,000 square foot logistic center that comes into town and has to meet state requirements. And as of right now, per this slide, if it's a zoning action, we can take care of it through a zoning condition. But if there's a notice of decision from the DRI, non-zoning actions are currently not required to meet the infrastructure improvements. So what this ordinance will do is basically say that you will be required to meet any of the road improvements for a DRI or a notice, notice of decision. If, currently as it reads right now, the county is responsible for the improvements for those roads. Yes, ma'am. So let's just say that a property is already zoned, industrial, the development comes in and goes through a DRI. Since we don't have any zoning conditions on that property, in theory, they don't have to make the improvements. But this ordinance right here will require them to make those improvements. And so, again, it goes back to talking about traffic, relief of traffic. You know, this just gives us more authority, if you will, to make sure those improvements are made specifically for those non-zoning type actions.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak? Okay, hearing none. Any, any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Okay. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so next, we will have an ordinance by the Henry County to amend the Unified Land Use Development Code, and this is also a public hearing.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The item before you is to bring forth a ULDC amendment regarding roof pitch requirements. At this time, the Unified Land Development Code requires all single-family residential dwellings to have a minimum 412 roof pitch. The proposed ULDC amendment would provide revisions to Chapter 4, Section 40107, Design Standards for Single Family Dwellings. The intent of this amendment is to provide more opportunities for diverse architectural styles while also ensuring compatibility with those existing homes in the immediate area. This ULDC amendment, as proposed, would allow staff This ULDC amendment, as proposed, would allow staff, specifically the zoning administrator, to evaluate requests to modify the roof pitch based on compatibility of the surrounding homes. All roofs, regardless of the pitch, will need to meet the building code. Planning staff does recommend approval of this ULDC amendment request. Thank you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you provide us an example of alternative roof pitches?
Yeah, absolutely. I was saying, Commissioner Holmes, because, I mean, I'm, I'm trying, are we doing something different with the roofs?
We would be eliminating, not eliminating, we would allow requests to modify the roof pitch, for example, to a, a, s, less steep slope of the roof. We would allow those requests to be handled administratively. That is to allow for more architectural styles, styles, roof pitches such as a 712 might be rather steep. Our requirement is, at this time, is a minimum of 412, which is a lot of the homes that you see now in Henry County.
So if I might add, so a lot of the designs that we're dealing with right now are more, more modern, slightly like the apartment complexes. They're all required to have a 412 or greater. It allows us to reduce the roof pitch a little bit, to make it look more modern versus having that colonial look from a regular, a regular roof. So we've had a gentleman that did submit plans to do a more modern style, more glass-type looking house with a flatter roof, but we couldn't allow him to do it because we only had a 412 roof pitch requirement. So this allows us to kind of work with him. He made, I don't know, what's it, a 312 maybe, I don't know, to make it work, to make it look more modern, if you will. I've seen some that look great, then all of a sudden you see the roof line that kind of throws off the, the architectural style of it. So this is just allowing us that flexibility to do it administratively.
Okay. Commissioner?
Does this impact subdivisions?
Well, not necessarily.
Well, let me tell you my concern.
Okay.
My concern, and I would like to know how you guys would address this, my concerns is that if it's a subdivision, somebody buys a lot next to a neighbor, and then you make the decision, the county makes the decision of, that they will approve this person's house, and it doesn't conform to the rest of the community, and the community has no input, where right now, if they're coming to the board, at least there is input, you can see what else is around it. But you guys just making decisions in-house. I think there has to be some stuff in place where you are visiting, it comes before the board, or the community has input. Because other than that, you guys might like it internally and let them build a whole glass house next to somebody else's house. So how do you address that?
Right, so it was not meant for, we can put a stipulation in to not be inside subdivisions. However, this is really meant for those people that buy one-acre lots outside of a subdivision.
But they should state that in this, because it doesn't.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't.
We can say that.
Right now, it's open, it's an open slate, anywhere it could go.
Okay.
So we would have to have, I mean, I would make a recommendation, I hear the rest of them.
Would this be more toward also commercial?
Or single-family dwellings?
This is for single-family homes?
Specifically.
But you used the example of an apartment complex. So an apartment complex is not a single-family home. I can see apartments wanting something different.
Okay.
Or even commercial buildings wanting something different. But if we're talking about residential housing subdivisions, then we're going to have different types of rooftops in them?
The intent of the ordinance was really specific for those that buy lots, scattered lots throughout the county. And I used the apartments to give you a visual of what we've already dealt with. In addition, if someone else has already bought a, bought a lot outside of a subdivision, they wanted to do more of a modern-type home. And again, the 412 roof pitch threw the architecture off. So we were just trying to allow some level of flexibility on those type of, those type of one, one-offs, if you will, not for, specifically for subdivisions.
So, so could we not make that as, as a condition?
No, I mean, if someone buys a lot, they buy a lot, right? It's a single-family lot on their own accord. So I buy a lot, I want to build a home on it. It doesn't have to go through any type of zoning or anything of that nature.
So could we do a waiver per case?
Potentially, but either way, we'd need, we'll need to have some type of administrative authority to do that.
Part of the zoning code, they don't have the authority to grant a waiver. The only option would be a variance. They would have to apply for a variance to come back before the board. And I think what they're trying to do is for those individuals that may be building custom-built homes, it may be two months before they can get on an agenda for a variance. I think the solution may be Tucson, just to modify the language, not to include subdivisions. So if you're part of a platted subdivision, this would not be applicable and only allow it outside of a subdivision. And if the board wants to say with a two-acre minimum, granting the Planning and Zoning and Building Department the authority to review it. If they don't agree, then they can appeal that to the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Wilson, I know you had your hand out.
So with a 312 pitch or lower, what material, what, what roof materials would have to be used? I know shingles are not warranted under a 412, so we just have to go to a metal roof. So all metal roofs would have to be, here we go.
Morning Commissioners. So shingles are permitted on roof slopes from 212, and then, of course, all the way up to 1112 or completely vertical, which, of course, would resort back to 112. But shingles, when you do 212 or 312, you have to have two layers of underlayment, or you have to have synthetic felt. And that's something that, that our department would ensure from an inspection standpoint, as well as from a plan review aspect. So metal is an option, shingles are an option, you could also do clay tiles. Since, since our snow load is only five pounds per square foot, a, a lower slope roof is permissible in the state, but...
So you're including three-tabbing architectural shingles, are both allowed under, under a 312 if they have the, those type coverings, correct?
Correct. So long as you have double, standard underlayment is 15-pound roof felt. If you go under 412 and you want to use asphalt shingles, you have to double that underlayment, or you have to use synthetic felt throughout. And that's already in the state code.
How's inspectors going to know that? They going to crawl up on the roof? I mean, that...
Well, generally, in that situation, we haven't come across it because right now it's not even permissible.
Right.
Now, a, a lot of builders are putting synthetic felt in valleys just because it is a more durable material. But it's something that we would require from a plan review aspect, and we can always request documentation on the inspection.
Do you guys have an example of the type of building this particular person wants to build? I mean, I think that would help a lot.
Not available at this time.
Yeah, it would be hard for me.
It was months ago, I can find an example.
We, again, they submitted plans, but we don't have them right at this moment.
So one more question. If you go a single layer of felt, it, it's only, your shingles only warranted from 412 and higher, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, that is correct. So 412 and higher, only a single layer of felt is necessary. But from 212 and 312, to be able to use asphalt shingles, you have to double that layer of felt underneath. There's no exception.
I just want to make it clear.
This is the whole subdivision?
I can't get that to zoom, but that's indicative of the type of house we're referring to.
And I've seen several of these built in certain neighborhoods, and the roof, I mean, it works because you have to put the 412 on it, but it kind of throws off the architecture a little bit.
Interesting.
So if somebody wanted to build an entire subdivision with that type of rooftop, I guess that would be different, you know, if the whole subdivision's going to have that same, same kind of roof.
Yeah, so as customarily, most of the rezonings have come through the board, so you've seen what they're going to build prior to that. Again, this is just a one-off situation that we ran into, and we were trying to accommodate that, at least have some level of flexibility, because that's what we're seeing more and more of these type houses come our way.
So is, is, is this on a one-acre lot, or this particular request?
I can't, I can't remember what, how, three, okay, three-acre lot, yeah.
He said one-acre lot, okay.
Three acres.
Three acres, oh, okay, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to see, make sure that it's not in a platted subdivision, to give you guys lenience for that. But if it is in a platted subdivision, that it has to be a public hearing. That way, communities can weigh in, people can come in and be involved, like we always have. I think this is, this is, this is 2022. This is where people are going, especially if somebody has bought their own land, they should be able to do what they want to do in their land. But I think that we need to redo the resolution to make sure that it is not in subdivisions. And if it is in a platted subdivision, it has to be a public hearing.
Okay.
It's not a varianceable item per ULDC. So what would have to happen is they would submit their plans to the Building Department, and then the Building Department could deny it, and then they could file an appeal to the denial of their decision, and they would come straight to the board. I think that would be the easiest way of doing it.
So just point.
So it's three, three steps in, Tucson, that would have to be added. So I don't know if it's the board's wheelchair to let them go back and fix it or do it now, but you would need...
Just go ahead and get it over with.
Yeah, you would need three things in there. You would need to, if you guys deny the applicant, the applicant will have the right to come before the board. And second, that it has to be in a non-platted subdivision. If it is in a platted subdivision, then it has to be a public hearing. That have to be advertised in that subdivision so that the people that live in that community will have, know what's happening in their community.
Right, so we weren't, the ordinance way it's written right now doesn't even allow that inside of a platted subdivision. It has a match to existing homes that are already inside the subdivision.
Right.
That's what it says in the ordinance as, as of right now.
Okay, so we'll just take that one out of the platted subdivisions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, say, 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 say your, say, Stephanie, you all, I want to make sure that Stephanie, you all are getting this.
So, um, can you pull, is this a...
Not the ordinance.
No, ordinance is not. Do you have a copy of that?
Where's our ordinance?
That is in the exhibit box.
It's in our books. Oh, okay.
The last few pages should have, should show the tracked changes format.
Commissioner Clemens, I think I have a question. You asked for.
Okay.
So part one, we're going to amend the ordinance to allow administrative waivers to be granted for those lots outside of a subdivision. Applicants shall be allowed to apply for a waiver, but any denials filed by the Building Department shall be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. And then any lots within a platted subdivision must come before the board for approval, and planning staff has to advertise that there will be a hearing to consider the roof pitch. Is, are those the three?
Yes.
At least a one-acre lot, though.
I thought there was probably a three-acre lot.
Yeah, they, they...
This particular one?
That, that particular one is three acres. The one that they're talking of, the where the request is.
No, no. We don't have a minimum. I don't think we should put a minimum, because they have a quarter acre of a lot. And if they own it, yes, they're property.
So this is outside of a subdivision?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, okay. As long as it ain't a subdivision.
Right. Well, that's what they had, that no, no platted subdivision.
Okay. Okay, you got it?
I had it.
Okay. Stephanie, do you have it? Okay. If there's no other discussion?
Motion to approve, yeah.
Okay, got a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
With, 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 motion to approve with amendments.
Huh?
Motion to approve with the, um...
Stated amendments.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all right. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Yes, I am. All opposed? Okay. All motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, citizens of Henry County, and board members. This next case is not a public hearing. This is just a clarification of a previous ULDC amendment we made on June 7th of this year. In that amendment, we amended the highway corridor overlay districts prohibited uses to not allow self-storage facilities outright. After that amendment was passed, we did notice that there were some clarifications that needed to be made to make the ordinance a little easier to understand for everyone. So here's the original amendment. And if you see here, it says self-storage, and then it, you know, takes out the part that, that allowed basically indoor storage on the corridor. And now we're amending it just to have its own line saying self-storage in many warehouses, and that just takes out some of the confusion. So that's, that's all that's being changed.
Any questions? Any comments? Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second, okay. All in favor? Okay. Uh, any opposed? What, what's wrong?
You did say it was a public hearing, but I'm not sure we called for people to come forward if we could do that.
Okay, all right, then let's go back. Anybody wish to speak about the roofs? Come forward.
Well, we have a vote on the motion for...
Oh, it was, well, it's, it's our...
So y'all need to take a vote on that.
Yeah, we took a vote, that's done.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so we have one last item on the agenda. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2022, '23 general fund budget to host a community service day, appointee lunch, and plug-in expo in the amount of $4,500. David Smith, if you will come forward and present, please. And we will be going into executive session on litigation and real estate.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Henry County Community. What you have before you is a resolution to amend our current fiscal year 22, 2023 general fund budget in order for us to host a community service day, an appointee luncheon, and a plug-in expo. That amount requested is $4,500. The community service day will celebrate the work of first responders and essential workers, will engage the community to support families rebuilding from the impact of COVID-19, and sharing information for a more health-conscious Henry County, and supporting veterans associations and our community needs. These events may result in actual amounts exceeding the budgeted amounts in the Board of Commissioners' budget. This amendment is to adjust for those potential variances. As required under Section 3681-3 of the Georgia Code, any revision that alters total expenditures of any department or fund must be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Staff, even though this is a small amount, it's a recommended amount, and staff is recommending that the board approve a resolution to amend the Board of Commissioners' fiscal year 2022, 2023 general fund budget. And prepare for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Wilson?
So this is not a Board of Commissioners-sponsored event, correct?
My understanding, it is not a Board of Commissioners-sponsored event, but it is something that our, Madam Vice Chair would like to do. One of the things I did participate in is the plug-in expo, which is really a county commis, county-wide event. I'm not as familiar or acquainted with the community service day. But the plug-in contracting expo is a Henry County event.
So that's a Henry County event, and then the, the other events are District Four events.
I'd have to defer, I'd have to defer.
Defer to Commissioner Thomas on that, please.
I'd have to defer to Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you.
Thomas, okay.
Do that.
Okay.
First of all, this is events that I have done annually to engage the community as a commissioner. It is not the first time they have been done, but because of the new Rule 122, we have to make a request to come before the board for this. The plug-in expo is designed to bring small businesses together to meet with our developers about the different projects that are happening around the county, they learn how to do business with the county. I don't see it as a District Four event, it's open to everyone. All of our events I have sent out by Michelle to all the commissioners to participate. It's just sponsored by me as a District Four commissioner. The community service day is all about 9/11, commemorating and celebrating our first responders and our essential workers having come through a global impact. It's something I do every year to talk and... It's something I do every year to talk and to work with them. Usually it's done in collaboration with Stockbridge, the city of Stockbridge. This year I pulled out to do it on my own as a county event. It is not a personal event, it is for the county, and it's something that's done annually. And the budget that's here today is far smaller than what we've done before. It's just the processes have changed since there have been a new change in the law to come before the board and ask for these dollars to, to work with. The appreciation luncheon is for appointees. It's done annually as well. Normally I try and do it twice a year. Our appointees are not given anything but small stipends for the work that they do for the county. We come together and have our annual luncheon to update each other about what we're doing, making sure we're on target, setting our goals for the year, working together. And that's one of the ways to celebrate their work, to do the work that they do for the county and to also communicate with me and with each other. So these are events that have been happening for the past three years. It's just the process of having them funded is different this year, Madam Chair. And I'm following the process that has been set forth by SB 22 to make sure I'm funded by the county to, uh, for these dollars.
Yes, I want some clarification. SB 22 has nothing to do with the funding, is that correct, uh, Sherri?
Well, it's the process, I have to make the request to the chair and then to the board for the dollars. Before, we had a budget that we can use, is what I'm simply saying.
Did we have a budget for these items before?
No, ma'am, we have not had a budget for these items.
All right, I just want clarification and, and not to use SB 22 as the reason why you have to bring it before the board. Because that is not true. Uh, this, this, this is, um, um, you know, so I, um, just want the clarification, for clarification, because do we have a, do, do we fund commissioners' events?
We, we have not funded commissioner events, which is why this needed to come before the board.
Okay, all right.
We do, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wilson had his hand on.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I don't think the taxpayers need to be on the hook for, uh, appointee luncheon for any district. I don't think the taxpayers need to be on the hook for any district event. Yes, where you can have sponsorships, if you want to have these events, you go out and seek sponsorships. But that, our taxpayers don't need to be on the hook for this at all.
Well, I don't think we're putting them on the hook. Like I said, these have been funded before. How they were funded, I don't have, I cannot tell you through cause of an SB 22. But we have worked in collaboration with the city of Stockbridge before. I have done these events before. And this is a community engagement to celebrate the work of our first responders. This is, we've done other events around the county to celebrate them and our essential workers. This is also an event to engage our community as well. So this is not putting anything on the hook. They are a part of the celebration. And we will also, uh, enjoy the times and the commitment that's been made for it. And we'll be educated through the expo as well. There are other things that we have done around the county for our communities. And I certainly hope that this board will understand that that's what the whole purpose is and will support it.
Commissioner Anglin.
I was going to say, I mean, I'm in support of community events. This just feels very district event as opposed to inclusive. And I would like to see more stuff, if we're going to do stuff as a county, that it be kind of allocated per each district. If that's the direction of which we want to go, if there's monies to be available when we do the budget for the next year. Thank you.
Again, this is for all of Henry County. It's not for just District Four. It's just that I am the host. It is in District Four Park. It is here at the administrative building. But it's not for a district. It goes out for everyone to participate in.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, um, Thomas.
I think the issue is, is that the way it's written on the, um, what I'm seeing, it says District Four appointee luncheon. It doesn't say all appointees. And so I was thinking when I first read it in the resolution that all the appointees that all the board have, that it was a luncheon for all of our appointees. That would make it more inclusive. Um, and there's other things that we can do to make it more inclusive. Um, the, the, the way this broke down on the fees, it doesn't maybe not feel that way to them, even though you've expressed it. So I think that we can go back and look at how you can make it more inclusive and more appealing because it specifically says District Four appointee luncheon. It doesn't say all, and I thought it was everybody. Um, I do concur with the other commissioners that it needs to be inclusive so that you don't get any, you know, so that it doesn't feel like it's not. So let's go back and look at it, uh, a different way. And also, I know that before, when we tried to do things that were more countywide and inclusive, uh, Commissioner Anglin, one of the things that we do is we make sure that it falls up under our departments. Um, if we're even doing appointee stuff, if they're on the development authority, development authority need to give some money. If it's on the ward authority, the ward authority needs to give a little money. So there's a way that we can do this. If this is what the will of Commissioner Thomas, maybe we can help her make it more inclusive. So bring it back.
Or we can just pull out of our pocket for appreciation for our appointees. We can do that.
Yeah, if you want to make.
We can do that as well.
Yeah. And I do that, I do that.
I've already paid for it, and if it's not reimbursed, I'm fine. But I did pull it out of my pocket, sir, because my appointees deserve that time and that energy to come together, to learn from each other, to learn to make sure we're on the same page, learn about the objectives of the county and move forward. So that has been done out of my pocket already. And if it's not reimbursed, I'm fine with that. But I would like to make sure that commissioners are given an opportunity to have community engagement with our constituents, to offer information like the plug-in expo, to have a community day to celebrate our first responders and celebrate our essential workers. That's something I would definitely like to do.
So, so I will say, we do have an employee appreciation day every year. Every year, employees, we have an employee appreciation day. And, and all the employees, um, I know several of the appointees from the various districts have attended. Um, and we just had that win, Sherri.
We had it maybe three months ago. At Heritage, it's about three, three months ago at Heritage, yes, ma'am.
That, that is something that is countywide, that all employees, all appointees are welcome to come and participate in that employee, uh, appreciation day. I know that there's other things that we do as a whole for employees. Is, is that correct?
That is correct.
We have the, the National Night Out for Public Safety, uh, which is something that we do in collaboration with the sheriff's office and fire department, everything, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I guess one of my questions, the contract plug-in expo, is that something that can be taken out of the BLC budget? Since that is a, I mean, I guess, David, is that something that can come out of the BLC budget?
It is, ma'am.
To do the, do that particular event?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that is something that we can look at there. With regards to the community service day and the District Four appointee luncheon, um, I guess I'm kind of in agreement that if we're going to do it for appointees, we need to do it, do a luncheon across the board for all the appointees.
Madam Chair, that function is happening. And I've paid for it already. So that's something if this board does not want to reimburse for, I'm fine with that. I've already paid for it because like I said, my appointees do deserve that, and I've paid for it already. And that can be eliminated. I'm fine with that.
So.
I would like to go to say, but this expo is for everyone. It was wonderful when we've done it before. People from all across the county does participate. The community service day is not for any particular, uh, district. It's for everyone. And this has been publicized as being available to everyone. And I certainly would like to have an opportunity to do that. I think we owe it to our communities to have events that invite them out to meet us, to get information and to participate in activities saying thank you for your services. And that's what the community service day is all about.
Commissioner Wilson.
So this expo, but still again, it is a district sponsored. I'm looking at a flyer with Commissioner Thomas's picture on it, not the Board of Commissioners' picture. This flyer right here says, Contract and Plug-In Expo 2022, September 24th. And it says hosted by Commissioner, it don't say the Board of Commissioners. So I don't think if the Board of Commissioners is not hosting this, it should not be funded by the Board of Commissioners. So anyway.
Again, I am the host. I will say that, I am the host. As you have functions, there is usually a host that's come. If the Board of Commissioners would allow me to put their name on there, Madam Chair, I am glad that it's not yet published to put the Board of Commissioners' name on it. Have no problem with that. But as the host, that's the way it was designed. And I'm not going to try and do something for Vivian. This is as Commissioner Vivian Thomas for my community. That's my goal.
So Madam Chair, I wanted to.
Jack, because I think it's important, I appreciate the conversation because one of the things that we ask this board during every budget cycle is to identify projects that you'd like for us to include within our general fund budget. Because we know that you want to have events. We know that there are events that need to, to happen within your respective districts. So I will again ask this board, as we look to develop budgets, identify what your projects are. Commissioner Thomas, you and I have talked about this. I know that you have events that you want to do. But what we have to do is make sure that we have it budgeted within the respective department because it's not just an event. It also includes staff. If we open a building, I have to have a person here. So we need to know so that we can go ahead and put these events on a schedule, let the board approve it, and you all will know going forward for this year, Commissioner Thomas is going to have this event, Sheriff Harrell is going to have an event, and whomever else wants to have an event. We just need to know what the events are so that we can plan accordingly. When we have community events, you have a stage that has to be set up. There are items that we can get, but we need to know. So we will make sure that when we develop the budget, we, we reemphasize the importance of identifying what your events are going to be. I know I've also had a couple of commissioners inquire about the possibility of allocating district funds. This board sets the budget. If you all want to identify a funding amount for each commissioner to have so many events a year, then let's do it. And then we don't have to go through all of this. We'll go ahead, adopt it as part of the budget, and then the public knows at that point, hey, we're, each commissioner is entitled to $2,500 a year, and here's what they're going to do with their $2,500. Anything beyond that, each district commissioner will be responsible for. But we just need to include it in the budget. It has to be a part of the budget process, which is why this is having to come before the board because it was not an approved expenditure as part of our recently adopted budget. So I just want to reemphasize that again. We'll help you get, make the event happen, but we've got to make sure that it's approved and that the funds are budgeted.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have a resolution. Um, resolution amending the fiscal year 2022, 2023 general fund budget. Um, we've had discussion, is, uh, can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be approved, uh, also striking out the appreciation luncheon that has already taken place. Also adding in on this expo, the Board of Commissioners as, um, host as well. I have no problem with that. And with the community day, with the Board of Commissioners as host as well. There's no problem with that. If I knew that was part of what needed to happen originally, I would have written it like that. I am very community oriented. I am, and I love to work with my community. And I'm asking this board to join me as host of these events and approve the budget. It probably will not be $4,500. We gave an estimate, uh, to, to submit to our, um, Director of Finance. But I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to join me as host of the two events and allow us to have this community engagement process, not only to inform and educate our community, but to thank them for the hard work they've done as first responders and as essential workers of this county. So I'm asking for approval with those adjustments and changes.
Is there a, uh, alternate plan if it rains? Because it is supposed to rain this weekend. So do you have an alternate plan if this doesn't, if it rain, if it gets rained out?
Two things we've done with work with Parks and Recorations, they have two oversized tents that they're going to put up for us. So if indeed we have to, um, go under large tents to operate, we will do that. That's what we're looking to do as an alternative.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so you got a motion, is there a second? Can I get a second?
Sheriff Harrell.
Yes.
Again, Commissioner Thomas, I think this is a great idea, but I think that we can do it a different way. Um, I know that, why you brought it before the board. So, but, um, I think that you can still have your community service day and still do all of the stuff that you want to do. I would just prefer to get another alternative to do it so that it's more inclusive. Because I just found out about seeing this today. Um, so I would like to talk to you about it and work with you on it.
You know, the, the option for the board to be the host and have their names added to it. But if this is not something that this board wants to support, I understand I will go forward because there again, I am a community-oriented person, and I will always push to work in my community.
Yeah, but we want it to be the entire county, and that's why I want us to go back and work together so that we can make it more inclusive.
I understand.
Okay, uh, the motion failed?
Motion fails.
Okay, all right. Um, and I'd like to get, uh, approval of the minutes for the August 2nd, 2022, uh, regular BLC meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, minutes.
Get a second? Okay, all in favor? And, and the opposed, motion carries. Upcoming meetings, September 20th, 2022, 6:30 is regular BLC meeting. October 4th, 9:00 AM is regular BLC meeting. Um, we did amend the agenda to include an executive session. So I'd like to ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
Sheriff Harrell, I'm sorry. We skipped over public comments as well. Um, if you can just ask for them, nobody there.
Oh, are there any public comments? Anyone sign up?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
So got a motion to go into executive session. Okay, got a motion, got a second, all in favor? Okay, um, we're going to break for executive session. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Why don't we just order bay breeds? Why do that? You can call them a day, don't do that though. All right, you're fine. Hey, so, basically, he just told me what was going on, so why don't we just order off bay breeds?
Do they have, um, like specials?
Um. What do you mean how they won't get over, pick it up?
No, I mean, hopefully, we don't, I mean, we just want to go, yeah, from bay breeds, and I have seen that, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Fish, raw, and then the area.
Yeah, we, we can get somebody to get them.
Um, actually, the price was maybe more expensive than bay breeds.
What's, what's the price over here?
The price over here, you can get a fifty piece for eighty dollars.
Okay.
Uh, what's the price, I think it's fifty three, I think it's my, I think it's one more.
Get, get the piece of, uh, uh, what kind of fish is it?
White.
Okay.
For fifty-eight ninety-nine, then you can get twenty-one pieces of plowder.
Yeah.
And, um, you can get the fries and the humblies, I mean, and then plus the.
So, so other thing I told him that, I wanted us to go ahead and package the meals. I didn't want people getting four pieces of fish, need two, take two.
I just, this is, this is, you know, my point.
Right, two pieces of fish with the, the fries, whole stuff.
Well, I don't want to speak to the couple of people here. We don't even, um, we don't make the white, we get the twenty-one pieces of plowder.
You got your.
Your what?
I gotta get it back.
Oh, your faces.
This is Rocky. This is St. Martin. How's work be? What was wrong doing this stuff? Well, I think some of the years. So you get that eight. Hey, we got sort of. We did too. We did. We were doing that. And they also didn't. Yeah, but it's that. To that, that little air. Disagreeing with that.
I need the two. I'd like to ask for a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Motion.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor? Okay, ask for a motion to approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to the executive session.
Victor, per second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor? Is there anything else, Stephanie? Okay, meet in adjourned. Thank you.